Injured in action here. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular scheduled February 4th, 2020 board meeting. Tonight, I've asked my good friend and fellow Commissioner, Mr. Fleming, to do our invocation and our pledge. If everyone will please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Father, we come this afternoon thank you for all your blessings, and Father, we thank you for a portion of life, health, and strength. We pray that you bless our nation, watch over and protect us, look on our leaders throughout the country. God give us strength. Now, we pray that you bless us tonight in decision-making, watch over and protect us, and keep us safe from all harm and dangers. Let us keep our thoughts and our feelings to ourselves, and God help us most of all to do your holy will. Father, we ask these and all other blessings. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from our January 21st, 2020 regular board meeting. Do I have any questions or comments? If I don't, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Moving ahead, we have a consent agenda. Tonight, I've been informed that item six has been pulled, so we have items two through five and item seven. Do I have any items wishing to be pulled for discussion, or do I have a motion to approve?
Chair motion approved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Before we go any further, I would like to, we have one additional agenda item. I'd like to go ahead and take care of that, and then we'll have those out of the way. It's additional agenda item number 10, authorization to reject and rebid derelict vessel removal. Mr. Harris.
The state is planning to pay for this. We had one bid. It was extremely high, and they recognized that. They recommended that we reject it and rebid, and they're gonna help find some additional companies to help ensure that there are more bids that come in this time.
Do I have any questions or comments from the board?
I don't move to approve.
Sir?
I don't have any. Just move to approve.
Okay. Got a motion by?
I got one question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Harris, are the other county, there are other counties that happen to do the same thing that are on the river?
Right.
Are we each bidding this out individually? I mean, would it not make more sense to try to bid it for the whole river cleanup?
I don't know how many other counties are actually doing this. We didn't do this for a long time. They extended this opportunity years ago, but the way the bid specs were written were just crazy, to be honest with you, because it required a contractor to make a blanket statement that he was gonna take every boat out of the river within a certain distance, and he had no idea how many boats might be on 10 miles of river, for example. So they've made some changes, but my preference would be that the state just handled this themselves.
I agree with that.
I mean, they don't mind telling us in a hurry that we don't own the river, that they pretty much oversee everything associated with the river until it comes to work, like in this case. So they wanted us to bid this and handle it. We're really just acting as facilitators in this process at this point.
Okay.
As many boats as I see along the shoreline, I don't think any other counties is doing much.
And I may be wrong, but I wanna say the Fed may have done a cleanup or two, but that's, that was a year or two ago, so.
I hope we move forward with this and get some good bid numbers and do some cleanup down there, because it's important to all of us. With that being said, do I have any other questions or comments?
Oh, for a second.
Yes, sir?
Oh, for a second.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Gamble, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving right along. Item number eight on the agenda presentations. We have an update on the legislative agenda from Mr. Dan Hartley, Senior District Aid, to Representative Chuck Brandon. Mr. Hartley, I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the board.
Mr. Chairman and other board members, thank y'all. It's always a pleasure being in Swanee County. I think I say that every time I'm here, but I do mean it. It's always good to see everybody. I'm sorry I missed y'all up in Tallahassee. Just wanted to give you an update on what's going on in the Capitol, what Mr. Brandon's trying to accomplish, and we'll keep our fingers crossed, at least until the governor gets on his desk and signs it. I won't be but just a few minutes here, I promise. Well, we're in the fourth week of nine weeks, so we're almost halfway done. It's going by pretty quickly this time. Mr. Brandon was proud to file HB 125 again this year. This bill would require insurance companies to provide coverage for hearing aids for children. As most of you know, this is personal to Mr. Brandon. His oldest son, Chase, was born completely deaf, and he wants to make sure that all children have the opportunity to hear and become mainstream back into the school system. House Bill number 391, Mr. Rep. Brandon also is honored to have filed this bill to name roads after fallen agriculture law enforcement officers. We have done this for the Florida Highway Patrol, and I wanna say we had about 49 so far that we've approved of, but the Agriculture Secretary come to us and asked us if we could do one for them too, and so we definitely wanna do that. We've submitted that this year. We hope that maybe next year, or starting in the fall, we can start to do that as well. We believe that we should honor the first responders who've fallen in the line of duty in the Florida roadways. We just attended a Jacksonville ceremony dedication for a trooper that died back in '61, and I'll be at one on Gainesville tomorrow, Friday, sorry, don't know what day it is. Friday, I'll be over there to do another one, unfortunately, and Mr. Brandon has also amended a bill to include the, unfortunately, the most recent highway patrolman that was killed in Orlando back in September. So we hope and pray that's the only one we have to do. So House Bill number 847 and 921 relate to the Department of Agriculture and the Bronson Animal Lab. These bills do anything from basically clarifying language to what is milk, what is not milk, what is can be sold and what can't be sold, and it also protects farmers and livestock farmers and regular farmers. It's sort of a, we call it sort of the HIPAA for animals. It keeps the public from having access to farmers' information if they have an animal that they have tested for whatever reason, then it'd be, you know, we wanna protect them from the public, and so that deals with them. House Bill 1185 is the House Ethics Package. We pushed this last session as well. Among many reforms included in the bill, statewide elected officials are prohibited from taking a job offered as a result of their official duties or political status. Additionally, state workers cannot seek a job at an organization regulated by their employer agency, and statewide elected officials must report salary increases or new posts if they work for an organization that receives state dollars. The appropriations request for the Swanee County Fire Station is funded at $500,000, but I understand, I spoke to Mr. Brandon, and I think he's working with, no, I know he's working with Senator Bradley and Representative Cummings, and we bumped that up to $800,000. So we're hoping that that'll pass. It has made it through the first committee, which is a good sign, and as most of you know, it has to go through lots of committees and then hit the House, and Senate will have a supporting bill, and so we're holding our breath and crossing our fingers for that. We know you guys need a fire station. We also have appropriations for $500,000 for the fairgrounds, and let me see what else I've got here. I apologize, I've had to make a few notes here. We're trying to, I'm trying to specialize it here just for Swanee County. There are some cosponsored bills that Mr. Brandon has also done. House Bill number 1055 will authorize more funding for the FDLE to use for unidentified missing persons cases, and also requires sex offenders to report all international travel. In addition, it requires sex offenders to report any new address within 48 hours of moving. House Bill 191 is a young farmers and ranchers bill that basically helps young kids get involved, or young people get involved in farming and in becoming a rancher if they want. Basically, he's encouraging young people to get into farming and ranching, so. House Bill number 2915, Future Farmers of America, better known as FFA and the 4H. There's a combination of about a million dollars in that to support the FFA and help the 4H communities. And of course, we mentioned there's $750,000 for the auditory and oral funding for rural counties for the deaf and hard of hearing, and I believe that is all my notes, and I apologize again, I'm a little disorganized. Yes, that is it, and I appreciate your time. I will take questions at this time, if you have any, sir.
Anyone from the board have any questions, comments? Mr. Richardson?
I do have a question. We talked, I talked with Representative Brandon before about this, and we've talked as a board.
Yes, sir.
About potential naming of part of US 90 of, in honor or in memory of James Summers, G. Summers, and I noticed that that wasn't, you didn't mention anything about, you mentioned first responders, did you mention anything about the firemen or anything like that?
To my knowledge, unless it's something he's doing that I'm not aware of, and it may have been too late for the session for this year, but I don't know, I'm not aware of any bill that he's presented for that, and I'm sure if he had, he would've told me. It could be that it's just too early. I mean, it was too late to get into the session this year, I'm not sure, but I'll check on it, and I'll get back with you and let you know for.
I think on our end, I think we were looking at two different roads, one the county road and one a, the state highway, so.
Right.
I'm not exactly sure where, what happened to it, but it kinda just got silent, so.
Well, I will make a note of that, sir, and I will get back with you, but I'm sure if there's any way possible, Mr. Brandon can do it, you know, he is a friend to the law enforcement agencies and the first responders, so I will check on that, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Mr. Gamble? Anything? All right, we sure appreciate your time, Mr. Hartley.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it. You have a good night.
Just keep working hard for Swanee County, that's all we ask.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Moving along to general business, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Next. Gotta be ready now. It's all you.
All right. So I'm assuming we're gonna go ahead and take up the one that we pulled from consent.
Okay.
Item number six.
Yes, sir.
This is a construction agreement with Florida Gulf and Atlantic Railroad for the railroad crossing that allows us to get onto the south end of the Catalyst site off of US 90. The reason I pulled this was because even today, I'm still trying to gather enough information and make a decision on whether or not we should use CDBG funding for this crossing, for this reason. The grant was awarded predicated on job creation by two companies, Matco and Klaasner. Matco has created their jobs, they're out there, but they're a small operator, I think they have maybe 14 people. Klaasner, on the other hand, is not doing much of anything. I've driven out there myself on multiple occasions and looked. They've got a security guard out there, they don't have much going on at all. So I'm hoping to hear something back soon from a representative of the company to see if, what they're going to do and when. What I don't wanna do is spend the money from that grant and then either not get reimbursed or have to pay the money back because the jobs weren't created, and that job creation is a part of the agreement. So having said all of that, depending on the outcome of whatever feedback we get from the company in the near term, I'll need to make a decision. In fact, I need the board to support whatever decision I ultimately make. If we're gonna have to make, we, this is a reimbursement grant, we have to pay for everything at the front end and then apply for reimbursement. Over the several years that I've been dealing with the company, there are multitudes of occasions where things didn't occur as they had earlier been represented. I don't know if this is gonna be another one of those occasions, but what I can't do is get the county engaged in a project out there. In fact, if we use the CDBG funding, there's not only that crossing, there's another crossing that's going to be required north of there that crosses our new rail spur on the north We're gonna have to build turn lanes on US 90. This crossing would be funded, then we're building 175th from that crossing north. We got $300,000 in a state appropriation for that. That won't pay for all of it, most likely, but if we use the CDBG money on that crossing, then we will also have to pave 50th a portion of it back, once we get up to 50th, turn back to the east and tie into the side of the Klaasner property. That's gonna require a new crossing over the new rail spur that we just bought, or built, but I don't wanna spend, you can see from this construction agreement that the numbers came in a lot better than probably what most of us anticipated. Dealing with CSX, we were looking at an estimate of a million dollars. This is 360,000 plus, which means that second crossing would cost probably 320 to 350,000 as well. I don't wanna build 700 or 750,000 worth of crossings when I really need a 360,000 dollar crossing on the south end, only to pay the money back to CDBG if I use it. So, one, you need to understand that we have to pay for the crossing. We may or may not get reimbursed for the CDBG funding. If the company isn't going to produce the jobs, then we don't need to go through the exercise. It's been a horrific exercise anyway, dealing with all the paperwork and bureaucracy associated with it. But I had asked for an extension of the time on that particular grant because it was expiring in January, but we started the discussions on this earlier on. One of the reasons we were out of time was because when we, when I got the grant administrator to agree to allow us to use it on the crossing a year and a half ago, a little over a year ago, actually, once they agreed to allow us to use the funding for that purpose, then it required an eight-month environmental review, so we had to stop everything at that point. And then the railroad sold, so we couldn't do anything till the railroad sold. So we've dealt with a couple of delays that were outside of our control, and now we're dealing with a company that isn't working, and all of those factors lead me to believe that we need to approach it very cautiously, and if we get to the point where we believe they aren't gonna produce the jobs, then we need to stick with that single crossing and just pay for it ourselves. I think that would be the prudent thing to do. Have y'all got any questions about any of this?
What is our, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What is our deadline now on the CDBG?
The deadline has expired. I've been talking with the grant administrators in Tallahassee about extending that deadline for a year.
We haven't got the extension yet.
No, but we'll probably get that extension. It'll take us about six months to get the crossing done, once they receive our money. This agreement requires us to pay upfront, just like when we were dealing with CSX, so we'd have to go ahead and make the payment now. It can be completed in six months. When I was on the phone, I had a conference call with half a dozen of them in Tallahassee about two weeks ago. At that time, they said they wanted us to try to be completed by the end of this calendar year, which is not a problem. We didn't know it at the time. I told them I was gonna, at that time, I was working with the engineers on the design of the crossing, the railroads engineers, and they finally came back with a schedule that I just got yesterday, and that schedule takes us about six months from now, the project should be completed. When I was communicating with the grant administrator today, I told them even though the schedule calls for roughly six months, I'd prefer moving that deadline closer to the end of the year in case of we have inclement weather, or hurricane, or back orders on materials, or something like that. So we're trying to obtain more time, but I'm not sure that that's going to cure the situation that we've been dealing with, with the company.
I would like to get some input from the board and some comments. I mean, I'll lead this offense as to my thoughts, and I wanna say this cautiously and try to find the right words to say.
Mr. Pravat wants you to be very cautious as well.
Thank you.
Right. That's what we got him on retainer for. I've been in Mr. Harris's office no less than three times in the last year discussing matters with Klaasner, requesting meetings, where he's called numerous times and numerous people, trying to set up meetings. I've been on this board for a year and two months now. Not once have I sat down with Klaasner in a meeting. With that being said, at this point in time, until they're willing to come to the table and have some discussions, I'm not interested in spending one more dollar of Swanee County's taxpayers' money for anything that they are doing because they're not willing to come to the table and talk to us about their plans going forward. And they have let us go out on this branch by ourselves, in good faith that they're gonna do the right thing, and so far, I haven't seen it. Now, if that changes no sooner than tonight, and they're willing to sit down and have a discussion, and we understand what's going forward, what's gonna happen, my whole demeanor will change, but that's just where my heart is. That's really all I got to say for this. Mr. Gamble, you got something?
I would be surprised if anybody on the board disagreed with you on that.
It's just, it's frustrating, you know, it's.
It is, well.
And there's no one ever there. I mean, I've made several trips out there myself, and someone said it was a security guard there. That's all you get, so.
It's just frustrating and disappointing with as much effort as I've seen that the county and the previous boards has done to put that whole piece together out there. And Mr. Harris's office worked on it for numerous years now, making everything come together to happen where they could have a successful business, and it's like, I mean, you could talk to the President of the United States easier, and you can get ahold of somebody on that company, and it's just frustrating.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harris, I mean, yes, it's based on their performance and their willingness to communicate and work with us on this, but originally, that crossing was being moved down to, I guess, get to the other property now that the rail spur's in, to get to that side of our properties. Is that correct?
That's correct. We need the crossing regardless. This crossing doesn't actually lead to Klaasner.
Yeah.
The only reason that we were gonna have to put in a second crossing was in order to use this money, they wanted us to pave a road up there and then reconnect to the west side of Klaasner.
This grant requires us to make that second crossing.
That would've been my next question, is it designated to come off of 90, or could we not just do the one crossing over the spur down 50, 50th? That would still get us into the site and on that side of the track.
The least that we need to do, the least that we need to do is build, construct turn lanes on US 90, put the new crossing in right near the water plant. That's 175th Road. When you put the crossing in, then we need to pave that road to the north, just 175th. If we do no more than that, that's what we need to do at the least. When it gets to the north end, you're at Matco. Matco can come back out then, because right now, they're sending tons of trucks in and out.
That road.
Back to Falmouth on the unpaved road. So that is the least that needs to be done, and if we do nothing more after that, we're okay. But if we use this grant funding, we have to do all of those things, plus pave a portion of 50th, and put another crossing in over our new rail spur, which we have no need for, and Klaasner doesn't either. They never needed that.
But all of this is tied to them doing what they said they're gonna do.
That's correct.
And that is the whole catch.
Right.
That here we are, out on this limb, like I'm, so to speak, and it's just.
Well, the being reimbursed is based on.
On that. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question. As far as the, as far as the jobs are concerned on the CDBG grant, they're not completely tied to have to be Klaasner if another company decided to come on, come on board and made up the difference for what we had, and, and I know that's a big if, by the way.
If they can do it, if they can do it last week, we'll be okay.
Okay.
If that helps you.
Then it's a bigger if than I thought, so.
Mr. Fleming, you got anything for us?
Because I'm one of the originals, I'm under the advice of the attorney, I want everything.
I know you were gonna jump on him, but I'm glad that the attorneys told you to settle down. Just so we're clear, Mr. Fleming, I think you did hear me say, though, that I appreciate all the hard work that the previous board's done trying to put this together with the county administration.
Right.
And it's just frustrating at this point.
It is frustrating, but, you know, I.
And I understand your position. I respect that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a statement, and I don't think this will be out of line, and if someone wants to dispute it, I'll welcome that publicly. I've had multitudes, I've made multitudes of requests for the company to communicate with Mr. Pravat and I by email. We've sent multitudes of requests, wanting to know what's going on, what's the schedule, very specific questions about the schedule. I'm not satisfied today that we've gotten a response that is accurate. I have personally had a number of meetings prior to the discussion on this issue that we're talking about now, many of which Mr. Pravat participated in, and we were told things that never occurred the way that they were presented to us. And I'm telling you on multiple occasions, going all the way back to when all of this started, things that were represented to us. So when I tell you that I'm not comfortable with what has been communicated to us more recently relating to job creation and this particular funding, I've got a depth of, quite a depth of experience with this particular company communicating things that never materialize.
Well, and I'd like to be clear, too, with the general public and the constituents here, is it's not our practice to run around trying to get into everyday operations of a business, but this business is tied to a grant that we're tied and in the middle of. I mean, that's what brings the board into it. It's not that we need to know what they're doing day in and day out, but we need to know with relation to this grant that was something that was gonna be built to help them, and here we are by ourself on it now, but I know you need some direction from the board. Do you want us to clarify exactly what that is?
One, I need the board to consider approving, one, I need approval of the payment and the approval of this agreement to the railroad for the crossing. We need to go ahead and do that.
In the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Item six?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Question, or statement, maybe. I agree with everything you said, by the way, earlier. I don't wanna go any further than that and elaborate, but I also agree with, with Mr. Gamble, of course, and Administrator Harris, that, you know, we kinda put ourselves in a tough spot over the years with this Catalyst site, because the county has invested millions of dollars in, in creating a site that's gonna hopefully produce jobs, industrial-type jobs, that really, we haven't seen come out the fruition, but we know that if we give up on it now, all that money is wasted. I've got a lot of constituents that would, that would have a problem spending more money down there, but it's, that's a tough one. $360,000 is a really good price compared to what we've been looking at, but how many roads is that gonna cost us by paying for it out of pocket and not expecting anything back as far as reimbursement's concerned? That's another concern, because that's really coming out of a general fund. Are you? Are you, or are we looking at possibly funding this out of a different...
Listen, I've got the funds hidden in a shoebox for this.
Good deal, okay.
Because I've seen this coming for a long time. So I'll take, I'll come back, we'll have this, we've got this taken care of.
I'm going to...
I want to, can I just make one comment, though?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gamble?
This isn't just serving the catalyst site.
Right.
When the catalyst site went into place, there's a lot of residential homes down that road that used to come all the way through and out to 90, and now it's a dead end, and they're having to turn and go back out.
We actually closed an old crossing. There was an old crossing there, primitive one, and it wasn't paved, but we had to close that in order to construct the rail spur. So they've been without a crossing, period, until we get something to go back in there.
And they've been, I mean, in turn, adding several miles, AKA a detour, to town that they've been without for a while.
Is this the, the people to the, I guess it would be the west?
The north, north and west, that have to drive back to Falmouth to come out and then turn back.
So that we're, we're talking about putting a street, and we're actually connecting all of that back up?
That's correct.
Basically, it's the original crossing going back, it's just going in a slightly different location.
Farther to the west.
Right.
And having to go the route that we have had the trucks go has really impacted a lot of residential.
Yeah.
And it's, it's created more...
Yeah, not only, not only did it cut the, yeah.
Sorry.
Not only did it cut them off from being able to come to town and have to make them detour another six, seven miles west, and then back to town, it also diverted a lot of truck traffic down a dirt road that's no wider than a semi.
Correct.
Yes.
I agree with those statements.
I knew we had that problem, so.
I, I'm going to clarify this for item number six on the consent agenda. Approval of railroad crossing construction agreement with Florida Gulf and Atlanta Railroad LLC pending the county attorney review. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gamble. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What would you need after that, Mr. Harris?
I need authorization to make the payment to the railroad in the amount of $360,187, and go ahead and authorize that payment's release from the finance department. Otherwise, it'll come back in a couple of weeks, and I need to go ahead and get it paid so that they can get this stuff ordered.
Have you identified where's, what, what line it's coming from?
Yeah, I have. I can't give you the number off the top of my head, but it's, I've got the money. It's, it's in a, it was gas tax revenues that we set aside years ago.
I know which one you're talking about.
Can you give me that dollar amount again?
$360,187.
What about the change?
If there's any change, I'll make up that myself.
We need that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir. Primarily because I need that release, that check released, so that we can go ahead and send it to them.
Mr. Chairman, I move to release the funds.
I got a motion by Commissioner Richardson. Got a second by Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, sir.
Correct? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Anything else, Mr. Harris? Just on the bright side in this conversation, you know, I've struggled for years dealing with CSX. It was an absolute bureaucratic nightmare. That's a fact, and I don't mind saying that publicly, because if they want to challenge that, I'll be glad to challenge them right here at this podium if they want to come debate that. But it took years dealing with them to get an agreement on anything. On the bright side, dealing with this new railroad and their personnel, it's been wonderful. I mean, it's no problem to get on the phone and call, and they actually answer the telephone. No problem for them to get right back with you. They email, they, they send you what you need, and they get things done like right now. The design work that we just approved recently, three or four weeks ago, the design is complete now. That never would have happened with CSX. We waited eight, nine months and still didn't have anything done, so I'm real thankful that we're now dealing with a railroad that wants to do business, and that makes a big difference with, you know, our having to deal with them.
Just a second, that. I, myself and Mr. Norris sat in a meeting with the representatives from the railroad. It's been about three or four weeks ago now, and great people, ready to get to work and do something, trying to do whatever they can to, to bring more business, and if they can help identify something that would be good for the county, I mean, they're trying to reach out and say, hey, you know, we can put this next to the rail spur and be something good for everybody. I mean, they, they were really great people. I really appreciated them. Anything else for us?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item number 11, do we have any public concerns or comments? Anyone wishing to speak, please make your way to the podium. Name and address for the record. Mr. White?
Franklin White, 7323 180th Street, McAlpin.
Yes, sir.
I've been asked a lot about the sawmill. What's going to happen if they close up shop and leave, as far as the county's concerned,
We don't have any financial obligations with the company, so there's nothing else outstanding unless we were to move forward on this particular grant funding. We would have to repay that if we were to get reimbursed using CDBG funding.
So just on the crossing?
Right.
Well, what about the real estate that they got in that deal out there? What's, what happens there?
I don't think we have any recourse on that right now.
No, we don't.
That's all I got.
That, that's the answer. It's not a great answer, but honest, honest answer.
It's not what you want to hear.
Well, I just think the public needs to know, and I've been asked a bunch, and I don't know what to tell them.
I mean, at the end of the day, we want, we want, we all want Clausner to, to...
To succeed, sure.
Yeah.
That'd be the best thing, absolutely.
You know, if, if that doesn't happen, we're all sitting here kind of looking at each other, and that's not a good thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John Coke, 1-805-289, wrote, since we're talking about Clausner, I, I have as much experience as Mr. Harris has, and, and there is help for you. I'm one member of the board. Mr. Hale is with us. I think you could come to the development authority, because that's what we're in existence for, if you were to need some funds. I would be more than happy to listen. In fact, I'm partially responsible for Clausner to be here. I, I switched my mind, and, and I'm sorry I did now, because, you know, but, that's water under the bridge. The second thing is, is we're going to get $800,000 for a fire station, hopefully. Now would be a good time to put a Faraday cage into the design now to protect our engines and some of the cars if we were to be hit by Rocket Man or anybody else that throws a nuke 300 miles above the atmosphere and creates an electromagnetic pulse. That will kill everything we have in this county, including the sheriff, any responder, anything. And if you build in a Faraday cage into the design, you could save a couple of vehicles and some, some equipment to, to deal with emergency situations if we were to get an electromagnetic pulse, and the possibility of that is quite high right now.
But if you're saying it's going to kill everybody, who's going to operate the car and the fire?
No, no, it's just going to knock out the equipment.
Oh, oh.
He's talking about, it's going to...
Electromagnetic pulse.
I thought you said it was going to knock the sheriff and everybody.
If you had a pacemaker, you might be in trouble.
Yes. You would be in trouble if you had a pacemaker.
I got you.
Any, any vehicle before 1995 possibly could be saved and put back into service. I, I have a '57 Chevy, so I'll crank it right up. But anything else, and you can do that inexpensively in the design for that one building, and have some pieces of equipment that would go through that. The third thing is, is a, is a request to, to take care of 180th Street. It's costing me money the way the speed limits are posted. My insurance company says that between County Road 136 and County Road 49, it's 25 miles per hour, even though there are 35 mile an hour posted speed limits from County Road 49 to 137 going east. You come west, there's nothing posted out there. The same thing happens from US 129 to County Road 49, where the posted speed limit, according to my insurance company, is 35 miles per hour, but it is posted both ways at 45. Since I, I live on the street, I, I would like to see the commission consider a straight 40 mile an hour from County Road 136 to US 129. It would be consistent, it would be safe, and there's no reason for 35 miles an hour between 49 and 136 because of the number of roads, the type of residential, there are no children along that road. I, I, I live on it. I live on 1-805-2, so, and my daughter lives on 8594, 180th Street. So that would be a compromise, because people are going to do the speeds they want to on that highway anyways. But 40 miles per hour would be a speed that would be reasonable, so that those of you who have these softwares for the insurance companies that give you a break, won't see that you're doing 45 in a 20 zone, or, or, you know, something different. And, and it's costing me about $25, about $50 a year in insurance policies. So I would ask you those requests.
Thank you, Mr. Coke. Your comments are duly noted. Any other questions, comments from the public?
I was just going to add, if Mr. White had any more people questioning, Ms. Coke just took responsibility for bringing the sawmill. Note that, please, sir.
We can get his contact and information for him.
But, but he does bring up a good point. I mean, there is money at the development authority we've used over the years. I'm sure that that board would not have a problem helping out, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add one more thing, something else that he said that, about the speed limit signs. I've asked about the speed limit signs on 180th down in District 4 in your district. It is quite a, quite odd. We go from 35, 25, 35 inconsistency. I think that the speed limit signs were never changed whenever the road was paved, and I think that's the simple, the simple problem there. So I, I'd like to see a little bit more of a consistency across the board on speed limits. We do have good road, these are well, these are good roads now. They're not, I don't, I don't think there's a reason why we have to cut them down too far.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, you have anything else to add tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. Legal counsel, you have anything for us, Mr. Pravat?
No, sir, not this evening.
Mr. Richardson, anything you'd like to close with?
I think I'm good. Boo boo.
That's got to be a first. Mr. Fleming? I thought he fell out of a chair.
I don't.
You don't have anything for us? No, Russ?
You're stunning me.
Commissioner Gamble, what you have for us?
I just got a piece of advice that I was given over the weekend. They said the leading cause of injury in old men is thinking that they're young men.
True, true statement.
I experienced that over the weekend, playing soccer with my kids when I broke my foot. So take it easy if you get out there playing with your youngins.
Advice duly noted.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
Isn't this coming from the, isn't this coming from the guy who wanted to sign that softball league?
I don't think y'all need to play softball.
Thank y'all.
We need to?
I have a broke foot.
Y'all, okay.
Commissioner Hale, what do you have for us?
Not a whole lot, just one thing. We were able to go out Saturday night, and, and you may want to say something about this too, but Commissioner Stapleton and his wife, and myself and my wife, or had the honor of being at the Fire EMS Awards banquet. There they are in the back, back there. I just want to say hats off to you guys. It was really nice. I seen the sheriff there as well, so it was a great event. A lot of great people honored that evening, including Chief Sommers. So I just want to thank you guys for what you did. It was a great, great get together. Thank you.
Anything else?
And I, if I could have got a shoe on, I would have been there. I didn't want y'all to spend any money on my behalf.
Nothing else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
I'd just like to echo what Commissioner Hale said about the banquet. It was really nice, and we appreciate the invitation to be able to come out there and be part of it and, and support all the employees and the, just a, a lot of people make a lot of sacrifice that people don't realize, a lot of hours, and everybody wants to be paid more, and there's not enough money to go around, but they get up and do the job anyway, and do it while we're sleeping. I really appreciate them. Other thing I'd like to say is to Jamie with the newspaper, I really appreciate the article about the new fire chief. That was first class. It was an excellent job on that.
Been a great job.
So we appreciate you for what you do, and sometimes it's good stuff you write, sometimes it's not, but you got to do your job, and we understand that. We appreciate you. One thing I want to get to real quick is, I had this thing last, at the last meeting, and we just, we had the fire chief thing going on, and I didn't get a chance, but Mr. Norris, we got a, there's a book here that comes out by North Florida College, and every year, they pick someone that they, I'll just read quickly what it says. It says, "Each year, North Florida College recognizes and celebrates an individual who has gone above and beyond in helping the college fulfill its mission. This year, NFC recognizes Jimmy Norris, Swanee County Economic Development Director, as its 2019 friend to the college. Norris was bestowed the honor for helping bring the college's idea for a NFC location in Livate to fruition." And I just want to say we're proud of you, and congratulations for stepping up and doing that. That, that, that's, that's what we're here for, is to make a difference, and we appreciate you working hard and doing that for us. I think that's all I got. With that being said...
Mr. Chairman, you did mention sacrificing while ago, when you was talking about the fire in EMS and...
Yes, sir.
I do want, there was a lot of people there sacrificing that night, because it was cold.
It was. It was outside.
It was freezing.
No, it was, it was a nice, nice event, though.
It was.
All I need is a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Fleming and a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.